Please lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. I would first like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
As well as our Tom Manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree, and our Clerk Meredith, as well as Lieutenant Connors, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and those watching at home, please note that this meeting is being recorded. We are very fortunate tonight to honor somebody who has spent a great deal of his time and his life devoted to our town, and that person is Frank McKinnon. He has been our Conservation Commissioner for thirty, thirty-four years and forty-two years as a dedicated member of the Conservation Committee. He goes over and above each and every day to help our community to do the right thing, and conservation is of the utmost importance. He is here today, tonight, and the Board has a citation that would like to present to him upon his retirement. And he's still going to be involved, however. He was, he made sure to tell me he was still not going to give up all the work that he's doing for the town, but his family has forced him into retirement after all of these years. So Frank, if you could please come up to the podium. He's The Conservation Commission is a close-knit commission. All the members are sitting here in the audience today to wish Frank the very best, and I know that each board member would like to say something on yah bahav. Selectman Riley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate you and thank you for everything you've done to this town, for this town, and just take it easy and do every minute of your retirement and enjoy it. So thank you again for everything, and you've done a lot.
Thank you. Selectman Serena?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Frank and I served on the Conservation Commission for about four years back in the early nineties, and it was always a pleasure to see Frank, and I'd always stop by the office and just to go chat with him in the morning. And I was at his quote semi-retirement party in Town Hall a few weeks ago, and he reminded me five times that he's not going anywhere, he's not retiring. But Frank, it was always great working with you. We had a lot of fun together, and I'll be seeing you around anyhow. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Frank, I've known you a long time. What an outstanding gentleman you are. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I think every single time I've ever called you, you answer that phone immediately, and you're just a great guy, a huge asset to the town, and I'm sure you won't be going anywhere. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. And Selectman Vice Chair Ceccholini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I think I've known you my entire life. I know you served many years with my dad on conservation, and I grew up going out to site visits and seeing, seeing you walking, going through the motions. Let me tell you, you have definitely set the bar quite high, my friend, and you're going to leave some big shoes to fill for whomever tries to take on that, that task after you. To get somebody to give over forty years of service to a community is, you don't see that anymore. And your generation was definitely special, and you are one of the ones that comes to mind when anyone thinks about the people that have given so much to our community. So I appreciate you and all you've done, and I look forward to you sticking around because your knowledge and know-how is going to be a valuable resource to whomever steps in going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Frank, I just want to say that the town, myself, are so grateful for all the years of service that you've put in and volunteered and dedicated your really second career and plus that to the Town of Saugus, and we're really honored to have, have you serve the Town of Saugus in the way you have. You're always there, you're always accessible and always there to help and give guidance to everybody, and we're glad you're sticking around in some capacity. So thank you very much, and we're so grateful that we've had you here for this long.
Thank you. Frank, would you like to say a few words?
I've, I've, I've really enjoyed all my years here in Saugus, and when I had to go out, someone was doing something wrong, I'd say, hey. If I was involved in the town, I probably would be doing what you're doing, but you gotta stop, and now you gotta do an order of conditions and stuff. I always treated people with respect because you don't get anywhere by yelling and screaming at people, you know? But I've enjoyed all my years here in Saugus, and I've been involved in every subdivision they've ever had, but it's been a pleasure, really.
Well, Frank, we have a citation for you, and it reads, Town of Saugus Citation to all persons whom these presents shall come. Be it known that on this day, June 11th, 2025, the Town of Saugus recognizes Frank McKinnon for his thirty-four years of exceptional service to the Town of Saugus as Conservation Officer and forty-two years as a dedicated member of the Conservation Commission, and it's signed by all five of the Board of Selectmen. So again, we want to thank you for your service, and if it's okay with you, we'd like to take a couple pitches.
Oh, wait, I just, I'll be waiting. They wanted to take a picture. Frank? Frank? Did you want to take a picture with your Conservation Commissioner and your family?
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to take a picture with your Commissioner and your family.
Stephanie left.
Good idea.
Well, she has a meeting at seven.
You, anyway, you want, you, you guys want to come in?
Yeah, sure. I don't know if we need all of us. Yeah, that's a pretty big potty right there. Yeah. We took, we took it with us.
Yeah, we took it.
Yeah. It's quite a group.
That's okay.
Alan, get in front. Oh, you got someone in the back you can't see there. That might be intentional.
One more.
You gotta get out of the way.
Lock that door, she's a window.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good night. Good night. Good to see you.
Good night, you're welcome.
Good night.
See ya.
Good night.
Thanks for coming in.
See you later, Paul.
I know you do. We know you do. Grant's pulling you out. It's young, very young. Yeah.
I love it.
See you later.
The next item on the agenda at a correspondence is for the approval of general bond, general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 bonds. And we have our Treasurer, Collector, you have many titles, Wendy Hatch, here this evening, who's going to explain what is needed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just take a moment to also give my, my thoughts about Mr. McKinnon. I've worked with him probably almost those forty years. I have many years myself, and he is the epitome of a true gentleman to everyone that he's ever worked with, whether it's within the town, in the administration, or the residents and any businesses. So I wanted to give my best, and congratulations to him as well. So tonight, I'm here before the Board asking for the approval of a bond which was sold on June 5th in the amount of eleven million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The town received ten bids. Ten. Just let that hang there for a moment. That is something to be proud of.
A big cry from zero. Couldn't, couldn't borrow money.
Ten bids. The winning bidder was Raymond James and Associates. They bid the full amount. They offered with the full amount a premium of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So they paid us seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this loan. Of that, the premium of five hundred and ninety thousand that was offered to us is used to reduce the amount that the town has to repay according to the new borrowing laws under the Municipal Modernization Act back in 2016. So the net amount that the town will have to repay is eleven million two hundred and sixty thousand of the eleven million eight hundred and fifty. The purpose for the bond was for several projects, departmental equipment. We had building improvements of one point one million dollars, the new ladder truck that will be forthcoming, two point one million dollars, bridge improvements, six hundred and eighty thousand, drainage capital improvements of one million five hundred thousand, parks and playgrounds, two million, departmental equipment that will be funded by the General Fund, one million four hundred and sixty-five thousand, sewer lift station improvements, two million three hundred thousand, I and I abatement for design of an upcoming project, two hundred and fifty thousand, and equipment that will be funded by the sewer enterprise for a hundred and five thousand dollars. In addition, lead and copper assessment inventory project continues, that's two hundred and fifty thousand, departmental equipment for the Water Enterprise Fund, a hundred thousand. That all totals the million, eleven million, excuse me, eight hundred and fifty thousand, and then the reduction of five hundred and ninety thousand dollar premium is the amount that the town will have to repay, eleven million two, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. As part of the process, the Town Manager and I are required to have a surveillance call with a, a bond rating agency that was standard and pores, and I'm happy to say that they reaffirmed the town's double A-plus long-term bond rating with this bond, citing that we have conservative budgetary practices, positive operations, and aggressive pension funding as positive factors in that rating. We're expecting to close on the loan and take delivery of the funds on June 18th, and in order to do that, I've attached a copy of the vote that is required by the Board this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have related to the borrowing.
Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chair, I don't, not a question, just a general comment. I honestly, I commend the administration for your fiscal responsibility and the way that your fiscal policies, because not only are there ten, ten bidders, and I can remember back when we had to, you know, use the state's borrowing rate and et cetera, but looking at the spread between one and ten, it's literally like two hundred, less than two hundred basis points. So it's such a competitive environment, meaning that when they're all looking at us as creditworthiness, they're, they're putting a similar factor. It's not uncommon, I have several clients that see spreads of one percent or more from the high to the low bid. When you have a spread of three point six nine down to three point eight four amongst ten bidders, it's almost unheard of. So it truly is a testament to, to what we have done. I know sometimes we get a little feedback and a little, you know, negativity about, let's talk, talking about the bond rating and stuff, but this saves our residents millions of dollars in the course of a year when you look at our rating and the rates that we're able to lock in and, and save money. And that's, it really comes down to the pockets of our taxpayers. And that's, I, I just think it, sometimes it's easy to overlook it, but I just want to commend you, Mr. Manager, and Wendy, and the entire fiscal administration team for the hard work that you put in, because sometimes it is thankless, but it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
What, members have additional questions?
Just quickly, Madam Chairman, yeah, that's the first thing that popped out at me, Wendy, was all the ten applicants that put in bids for the loan, how close everybody's figures were. It looks like they're really sharpening their pencils, and we're surprised about that. So that's, of course, that's a testament to the, your work and the manager's work and the financial stuff. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Town Manager?
And I think as, as the Board notes, and I know it's like, people at home or the residents don't, don't always necessarily understand it, but we're doing this stuff and paying the debt service within our operating budget. So these are type, these type of projects and the projects we've been doing for the last fifteen years are generally pro, pro, plans and projects that are done with two and a half overrides, so that the residents would bear a burden. We're not doing that. We're able to sort of fiscally handle our budget and be able to do this without an impact. The only thing we've had for an impact in quite a while is, is the middle high school and the Belmonte and Vets renovations, and the people, you know, obviously supported the direction for that. So I think we've really done a, a great job working together as a team with the Board, the Finance Committee, Town Meeting, my, Wendy, my department heads, of, of really trying to do, you know, the right thing for taxpayers. And I think we're able to move the needle. We've been improving the community. You know, sometimes people come, you know, come and go, and they say, oh, you know, why can't it move faster? Why can't we think, things take time. We've done a lot of things over the, over the decade and a half to be able to move the town forward. Most of us have all lived here our whole lives, and we didn't see anything happening or moving. Now we're arguing over how come we can't get things done quicker, and, and I think that's a good thing. I like that argument. And, but I just want to say that we appreciate all the support, and we, you know, we do the best we can, but I think that that's, people should understand that. We're not going to the taxpayers to do these major projects that are within the town. And you look around, most towns and cities right now, there's a lot of them out there that are looking for overrides and debt exclusions. Some of them are passing, some of them not. I think you have to have confidence. The residents and, and our government have to have confidence in ourselves to be able to be, you know, conservative and wise with our taxpayers' money. And I think having that confidence allowed us to, to, to get, you know, a, an approval on the schools. And, you know, I think we're looking at other things down the road, but I, I think we have to maintain that confidence. And part of that confidence independently is getting, you know, reaffirming a bond rating of double A-plus, which is, I think, you know, tremendous, especially in this economy. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And just to piggyback on what everyone said, I think it's very important that we maintained our double A-plus, and congratulations to all of, all of us, because I know that with the governmental changes, there have been some communities that have been downgraded, and we're fortunate that we were able to maintain that double A-plus rating. So thank you for all the hard work.
Yeah, and just to add to that, that we have a neighboring community that just, just in February got downgraded, their bond rating, and there's another community that did some, something that is fiscally not responsible, and they've been warned. Their, their idea or this other community is that they're going to try to go for an override, you know, next year. But, you know, you've got to be careful how you adhere to financial management practices.
And even if there's, Madam Chair, through you, even if a community is successful in getting an operating override passed, that is one of the assessment factors for a bond rating.
Correct.
If you need to get continually overrides in order to fund operations, they question your fiscal policies and if you're overspending. So we saw a neighboring community that had to go to the well twice, two different votes to get overrides now in two and four years, and that is a rating factor that does come into play that the rating bureaus look at. So the fact that we haven't had operational overrides for operating costs, I think, is, is a huge, huge testament to our bond rating.
And what I, you know, I always say this, and I know it doesn't, but it's just, you have to spend within your means, and I can't say that enough. It's just important to try to adhere to the financial management policies and keep continuing to try to improve, make improvements, capital issues and different things that we're doing. And so we couldn't do it, you know, one person can't do it, so this is all of us, I think, working together. And you're not going to make everybody happy. Everybody has different opinions, but overall it's good to fight over the progress. And so, thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Riley?
Just want to thank Wendy and your department and everyone that worked on this, and appreciate it. And again, to the Town Manager, thank you as well.
So I think it's time for the vote, if there's no more, no more questions or comments. Would anybody like to make the motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Selectman Cogliano?
Voted at the sale of the eleven million two hundred and sixty thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 bonds of the town dated June 18th, 2025, the bonds to Raymond James and Associates, Inc., at the price of eleven million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond should be payable on February 15th of the year's in principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2026, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, five percent. Year 2027, eight hundred and forty thousand, five percent. 2028, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five percent. 2029, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five percent. 2030, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five percent. 2031, five hundred and forty thousand, five percent. 2032, five hundred and forty thousand, five percent. 2033, five hundred and forty thousand, five percent. 2034, five hundred and forty thousand, five percent. 2035, five hundred and forty thousand, five percent. 2036, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, five percent. 2037, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, five percent. 2038, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, five percent. 2039, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, four percent. 2040, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, four percent. 2041, three hundred and fifty thousand, four point one two five percent. 2042, three hundred and fifty thousand, four point two five percent. 2043, or 45?
Forty, forty-five, and then you see in the further paragraph it breaks it down.
Eleven million fifty thousand, four point five percent. Further voted that the board maturing on February 15th, 2045, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. February 15th, 2043, three hundred and fifty thousand. 2044, three hundred and fifty thousand. 2045, three hundred and fifty thousand. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation, distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 30th, 2025, and a final official statement dated June 5th, 2025, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bond should be subject to redemption at the option of the town Further voted that the bond should be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen shall be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure, undertaking compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(12) in such form as may be approved by the Bond Council or to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with the relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one in the same document, delivery of executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail and a PDF. File or other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all the matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Thank you. And that is seconded by the Chair, as for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
It is now time for our first public hearing of the evening. Notice is hereby given that the Saguas Board of Selectmen will conduct Sorry, it is time for the first citizen's comment. Is anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board? Seeing none. That was time for the first one. Notice is hereby given that the Saguas Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the town's traffic rules and regulations to limiting Highland Ave to one-way traffic during certain times. This hearing will be held in the Saguas Town Hall Auditorium, second floor auditorium on June 11th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Carla, would you like to come to the podium?
So at the last meeting, we changed the hours of Pierce Memorial Drive, and we're back here today to talk about Highland Ave.
Yes, for the other street that borders the middle high school, Carlos Gazarella A-Car Road, also the principal of the middle high school. And thank you for coming to graduation Friday night. I think it was well received and students were happy to have you there. I had respectfully requested that the two streets that border the middle high school have their hours in the afternoon adjusted for the one-way. At the time I spoke in May, Pierce Memorial Drive and Highland in the afternoon are 1:00 to 5:00, one-way coming toward the school on Highland and exiting out onto Main Street from the building. And I was asking respectfully for an adjustment of 1:30 to 3:00. The reasoning was the building empties at 2:15 for the day. Most of the traffic dissipates at that point, and they do pretty much follow the traffic rules with a lot of people exiting through the parking lot out onto Route 1 North, a number of people going out onto Main Street, most taking a right. It is difficult to take a left out of there, even though it's two lanes, and nobody coming on Highland. But the difficulty is that at quarter or three, everybody's pretty much left the area except for the athletes and any high school students really staying after school. If there are middle school students there, their enrichment ends at 3:15 or 3:30, so there's not a lot of traffic. And the big thing is anybody coming to the building for something at 3:00 has to go all the way around, basically drive by the building if they're coming on Main Street. They drive by the school, go down to Vine, take a ride, take a ride onto Highland. And it is difficult for buses that would be coming for games in either the stadium or in the building. And it adds to the traffic and our students add to the traffic on Main Street, which is already a lot by 4:00. So if it were the wisdom of the board to allow us to have Highland and Pierce go back to being two-way at 3:00, that would be really helpful for the students and anybody coming to the middle high school at 3:00 or later. They wouldn't have to worry about it's one-way this way or that way.
So we're just changing the 5:00 to 3:00, just like we did for Pierce Memorial?
Yes, just like you did for Pierce, 1:30 to 3:00.
Do board members have any questions?
No.
No? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And that's seconded by the Chair, as for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make the motion that we modify the current one-way traffic time for Highland Avenue that will limit Highland Ave to the one-way traffic from the hours of 1:30 PM to 3:00 PM from its current hour restrictions. And before we vote on my motion, I, I do, I do want to, I know there's a lot of concerns about folks not adhering to the one-way, and I understand the frustrations of the school administrators as well. I appreciate the police department being here and the support. I spoke to the chief. I know that, you know, there's a lot of questions about having police presence for our traffic flow, et cetera. And the plan per, per the police department is to always have an officer present, but there's also more than one school with the same time requirement, so in the same sector, both Belmonte and the middle high school. So we do the best we can there, but I do think that improved signage would go a long way. And I also think having traffic enforcement down there, whether it's even our parking enforcement officer, having more opportunities to potentially write tickets to violators, I think would go a long way to make them think twice, because there's some repeat offenders, they post pictures of them, and it's amazing how many people do it kind of on a regular basis, that they go down the one-way. And I'm not, everyone can make a mistake, I get that, but for the repeat offenders, I'm thinking about safety-wise. I'm thinking about young kids that are driving, just getting their license. They're not used to seeing a car coming down a one-way street and what that could lead to. So anything we can do, working with the police department and working through you, Mr. Manager, to try to add additional enforcement, to try to nip it in the butt before, God forbid, there's any type of accident. But I do think the signage needs improvement, both coming by down the Main Street way. It doesn't really appear that, and maybe we need to go back to the, the letter board, the, the digital board for a little while to, to, to bring that up. And we also do have a sign, a digital sign at the high school, and maybe we could work together in conjunction with the town to try to get the signage out there, just to reinforce it.
Sure.
And once people start getting tickets, the word gets out, people are smart, and, and they start doing that. But we want to try to help alleviate as best as we possibly can.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
So that was the motion, seconded by the Chair, as for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming second night. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, just one second, Carla, before you go, I thought graduation was outstanding. Probably, and I've been to so many of them, you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Yeah, you, really wonderful job, great speeches.
So efficient, too. I'm used to sitting there for two hours and we're looking at our watch going, this is, well, we also are watching the skies.
Not for less than 200. You should be, we shouldn't be there that long.
Yeah, no, but it was wonderful.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think we did a good job and I hope to improve on it next year. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is now time for our second public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saguas Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Ezequiel De Skillo, 5 Normandy Drive, PBD Mass., 01940, Marias de Espito Santo Association, the Holy Ghost Festival of 262, Lynn Fels Parkway, Saguas Mass., 01906, on a two-day wine and malt liquor license, Carmen Victula's license and entertainment license to be exercised at the annual celebration on July 5th, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM and July 6th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, with the following conditions. Storage of malt and wine beverage for two days must comply with the 204 CMR special license CO4-7, provide state and local police detail and volume to be turned down at 10:00 PM. Further, temporary no parking signs to be posted the odd sides of the following streets, Donna Road, Lorraine Road, Zito Drive, Milano Drive, McLean Road, and Gilway, and no parking on Randall Road. This public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 10th, June 11th, 2025, in the Saguas Town Hall Auditorium, 298 Central Street, Saguas Mass. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're holding our 99th festival this year at 262 Lynn Fels Parkway.
Can you put, give your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's called Imperio Marias. My address or my personal?
Yes.
Oh, I live at 67 Heritage Hill Road, Wyndham, New Hampshire. Oh, Filomena Pitch, sorry, I'm nervous. Is Ezequiel O5 Normandy Drive West, PBD Mass.
Thank you.
So this year we're celebrating our 99th Imperio. It's a religious organization. We celebrate the Holy Spirit. So I cordially would love to invite you all to come and see exactly for 99 years what we're celebrating. The most important part of our festival is on the Sunday where we have a mass and we celebrate the Holy Spirit. Right after mass, we usually have free soups for the public, where you all could come with your families and enjoy an old-fashioned Portuguese soup made with bread and meat and a glass of wine, if you're old enough to drink. Also, if you, we give free bread, which we have different types of bread, which is regular bread and sweet bread. It's actually phenomenal, I personally think. And I don't know what else to say. My dad brought me there in 1979, and here we are 2025, and my dad has passed. I am the vice president and my daughter is a secretary, and my kids volunteer, and we all try to keep our traditions alive. And I would love for you guys to all come and, and see it sometime. I think you'd enjoy it.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions this evening?
No.
Can you just hold on for one quick second? Thank you. So do board members have any questions?
I don't know.
Any questions?
Looking forward to it, though.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, it's one of my favorite things to do all year. I look forward to the bread. I have to tell you, I probably gained five pounds just from the bread every time I go. And the soup is delicious, the whole, the entertainment, everything that you do. It's just a wonderful event. I really encourage people to attend.
Thank you. When I cordially invite you all, I don't just say that because I'm saying it, I would love for you all to come. I know that it's hot on the weekend because it's the 4th of July weekend, but if you're available on Thursday, right before you go away on the 4th of July, I'd be more than happy to give you a taste of our hot bread that we make on the premises. So you'd be my guest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't, I couldn't, thank you very much for the invitation. I couldn't make it last year, but Deb saved me a piece of bread and brought it over. It was delicious.
It wasn't a piece of bread, it was a bread. It makes me sound cheap, like I cut him a little piece.
So if there are no further questions from board members, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the Chair, as for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini.
Yes, Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we grant the request of Marias de Espito Santo Association, the Holy Ghost Festival, 262 Lynn Fels Parkway, Saguas Mass., on their two-day wine and malt liquor license, Carmen Victula's license and entertainment license to be exercised at their annual celebration, which will be July 5th, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and July 6th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Obviously, the storage of malt and wine beverages for two days must comply with 204 CMR special license CO4-7, provide state and local police details, and the volume on any entertainment to be turned down at 10:00 PM. They will also have no parking signs posted on the odd sides of Donna Road, Lorraine Road, Zito Drive, Milano Drive, McLean Road, Gilway, and no parking on Randall Road.
And that is seconded by the Chair, as for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, and we'll see you there.
Thank you.
It's now time for our third public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saguas Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Foy Nung, 42 Oak Street, East Braintree, Mass., for Carmen Victula's license to operate Sweet Sips S1 LLC, doing business at Sweet Sip, to be located at 1201 Broadway, Saguas Mass., 01906. This public hearing will be held in the Saguas Town Hall Auditorium, second floor, 298 Central Street, Saguas Mass., on June 11th, 2025 at 7:10 PM. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you please tell us your name and your address, please?
My name is Kwang Nguyen, from 763 Columbia Road, Dorchester, Massachusetts.
Hi, my name is Fuqwen. My address, 42 Oak Street East in Braintree, Mass.
Could you tell us a little bit about your business, please?
Sure. Sweet Sip is a beverage shop. It consists of smoothies, coffees, fruit teas, milk teas, and a little bit of boba. And we, we currently have two locations, one in Dorchester and another one kiosk in the South Shore Plaza Mall. And we're here today just to ask for approval to open a location in the Square One Mall, replacing the old JC Smoothies.
Are your other locations and malls as well?
Yes, the second location is located in the South Shore Plaza in Braintree, in the food court.
Yep. Do board members have any questions?
No, Madam Chairman, I mean, they, they don't have any seats, it's all takeout. All the recommendations came back okay, and you have experience, so.
And I assume your hours are going to be the same hours as the mall?
We will be following the mall hours, holidays and all.
Very good. So if I don't see any more questions, I'm going to open it up to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the Chair, as for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Serena.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the Carmen Victula's license to Sweet Sips at 1201 Broadway. There'll be no seats, all takeout. Hours of operation, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. Hours of operation 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. Yeah, any board health recommendations.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Good luck to you.
Good luck.
When do you plan to open?
We're planning to open around mid-July, so hopefully just get the summer in.
Very good, thank you. We wish you much success.
Welcome. Good luck.
It's now time for our town manager's report. Mr. Crabtree, please.
Good evening. I only have a couple of things. Just a reminder that we have a holiday coming up next, next week, Juneteenth. Town of Saugus will have a trash and recycling collection. We'll be running one-day delay for the Juneteenth holiday, so trash and recycling will not be collected on Thursday, June 19, 2025, due to the holiday. Collection will resume one, on a one-day delay, on Friday, June 20, 2025. Residents are kindly asked to leave trash and recycling curbside by 7:00 a.m. the day after their normal scheduled collection day. We'd like to thank everyone for their cooperation. Second thing is, just to let people be aware that overnight utility work planned for is ongoing from 181 to 183 Essex Street on June 9 through the 13th. So they'll have a detour. I actually got caught in it the other day. They'll have you get down one of the side streets and around, but the Department of Public Works, just trying to alert everyone. I think it's in that area, right in front of the convenience store, or what used to be the convenience store. So anyways, just want to let everybody know that and just be on the way. They will be doing the work at 7:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., so hopefully it doesn't affect too many people, but.
Just a quick question. How many, how long are they going to be there, Scott? Do you have an idea?
It looks like from the 9th to the 13th.
Four days.
Yeah, so they're almost, I think, what's today, the 11th? So a couple more days. They started on the 9th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Board members have any questions for the town manager? Seeing none. We have approval of minutes, the May 20, 2025 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chairman, to approve.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Chicali, I'm sorry, Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have appointments. Mr. Guy J. Gill requests to be reappointed as constable to the Town of Saugus. I don't see Mr. Gill in the audience. He writes, "Please accept this letter along with a copy of my current appointment and bond. As you know, I've been appointed constable to the Town of Saugus for many years. My term is due to expire on June 30, 2025. At this time, I respectfully requesting to be added to the agenda on an upcoming board meeting so I may be nominated and voted in for another three-year term. I believe that I am a viable candidate, and I'm qualified to hold this office for the town, as I'm a person with a good repute and character. Thank you for your continued support and consideration regarding same. Sincerely, Guy J. Gill, 15 Henry Street, Salem, New Hampshire, 03079." So his term would expire June 30, 2025. I'm sorry, 2028.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Typically, where this is a, you know, a reappointment, I don't think it's as critical that we have them present.
I agree.
So I would make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Guy J. Gill for a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2028, as constable for the Town of Saugus.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. It's now time for our second citizens' comments of the evening. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board? I don't see anybody really left in the audience. Now it's time for members' comments. Selectman Riley, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate the Class of 2025 again. Like to acknowledge everyone that had a hand in that. It was a great graduation, and I love the new part of how they walked in to sit down, and it was just a really great day. It was nicely attended, and they really did a great job, so congrats to everybody for the Class of 25. Also, we attended the Saugus Firefighters Memorial Sunday. It was a great ceremony by, again, by everyone that was involved, and this year they remembered especially Judge W. Parrott III and Bobby Fellino. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, I'd like to send, extend condolences from the board to the family of Marty Mallett. Marty was a police captain, a retired police captain in Saugus forever, and Marty passed away recently, so I'd just like to offer condolences to the family from us.
Of course.
And then we have Frank Federico as an alternate member of the Board of Appeals. His term is due to expire, I believe, July 15. Do we have to put him on the agenda, Madam Chairman, or does he just write a letter to us?
We have to put him on the agenda to extend him, yes. We can do that, we could do that at our, probably not the next, the July meeting, we'll do it, July 15.
Thank you, that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. Selectman Serena.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to mention the Saugus High School graduation. We all attended Friday night, and I want to wish all the graduates the very best in whatever they choose to do in the future. The Firefighters Memorial, like Corinne mentioned, was a great way to honor our firefighters who are no longer with us, and that was always a great service to go there. And I want to congratulate Mrs. Riley, Selectman Riley, on being the new president of the Lions Club.
Thank you.
We're waiting for the roar.
Everybody asked her to roar. She wants roar from me.
Well, I could, I know, that's right. I could show you, but then I'd have to kill you. So it's a secret, it's a secret.
And I also had, with Selectman Cogliano mentioned on my list, two police, Captain Marty Mallett. He's a good friend of my family, and I want to send my condolences to his family. We have the Save Annual Meeting and Dinner. That's June 25, Route 1 Grill House, at 6:30. Anybody interested in supporting Save or joining the organization? Tickets for the event are $35, and hopefully we can recruit some new people into the organization. Saugus Historical Strawberry Festival is Saturday, June 21, from 10 to 2 p.m. It's in front of the American Legion, and we have great strawberry shotcakes for $5, if anybody's interested. And the Saugus Garden Club will be out front, on the front lawn, having a plant sale. It's a good organization, I hope, if you're interested, come on out and support it. Then we have the Boston Zip Trip. It's coming to Saugus, Mr. Manager, June 27. They're going to broadcast, I think, in front of Town Hall. They haven't released too many details on the trip, but they said in the coming week they will.
8 o'clock. They'll be here at 8.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Serena. Selectman Vice Chair, Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I will echo the comments made, passing condolences along to the Mallett family. Served our town for a long time. He's a great friend of my family, and he'll be missed. Also, agree on the comments. The 2025 graduation ceremony was definitely unique. I like how the kids turned to the parents, and the parents got all jazzed up, and that was, that was really cool. They did a nice job, got some real promising futures there, for sure. And I just wanted, through the, Mr. Manager, to you, through you, to the police department for following up on a few, we have had quite a few recommendations and requests for, you know, changes in traffic patterns and stop signs and things like that, so I appreciate all the work that went in there, but also to the DPW, jumping on a lot of things that have come up over the last few weeks, especially when we got the rain and some trees and storms, things that came down. We do appreciate it, and the residents appreciate it. So town looks good. All the flowers are up and on the poles, and the 4th of July flags are up there, the banners, and so it's starting, it's starting to really look nice, so.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Chicalini. I echo the comments of my fellow board members. Wonderful event, the Firefighter Sunday, very heartfelt. Congratulations to all the graduates. I thought it was a wonderful graduation ceremony. I want to also congratulate the congregation, Ahavish, Shalom. They're having an event on June 22 on their 100th anniversary. We have a citation that all five of the selectmen have signed. I also want to, we, the board wants to wish Highland Law much success. They're a new business coming into town. The board also put together 13 different citations for 12 teachers and one clerk on the teachers that are retiring, and we want to wish them much success and congratulate them on their retirement. The Garden Club will be in at our next meeting, celebrating 80 years being here in Saugus. I also want to congratulate Selectman Riley on being the new president of the Lions. That's a huge honor, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
They're doing, the Vitali, Les Vitali, is doing the scholarship again on Saturday. We're invited at 11 o'clock over at Vitali Park for the Affallen Brother. It's really, it's a very nice, I go every year to Vitali Park. I just think the message that they send is wonderful, and they give scholarships to not just a Saugus student, but all the communities, surrounding communities as well. And the last thing I want to mention is typically every year we review our licenses and how much we charge for, whether it be an alcoholic license or a different type of fee, and we haven't done that in a little bit. So I asked Meredith if she could put together some information on licenses, and I just would like the board to take, to think about it. And one, we could, if you wanted to have a new fee, one that I think is worth thinking about, is on all alcoholic or alcoholic transfers. They take Meredith an incredible amount of time when she has to transfer over the license and all the work that goes into that. So if you want to think, and we looked, there is no fee specifically for that, so if you would want to, you know, I don't know how much we would charge for that, but it's something for the board to think about. And it was something started, I think when, you probably know better than me, when Jeanette Fassana was on the board, at, there was some, at some point, and maybe you too, Selectman Cogliano, every year, there was supposed to be a review of fees, and I know that during COVID, we didn't want to, you know, we were trying to be careful with what we were doing with businesses, but at least, even if we kept it the same, at least I think it needs a review.
I believe we worked with the Inspection Services Department, don't we, on this stuff? On some of the stuff, licenses.
Yeah, I think some of them are set by the town meeting, some are set by Inspection Services, and some are set by the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
So there's different categories.
We can maybe coordinate with them.
Yeah.
With that said, is there anything else anybody would like to say? Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Seconded by the chair, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good night, everybody.
Good evening.
The meeting is entered, our next meeting, we're actually having a meeting tomorrow morning on one article, but our next official meeting is on June 24. We'll see you then. Thank you.
Good night.